Good afternoon. I'll call our city council work session to order at this time. And our first and only order of business is Maguire Woods 2022 redistricting. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. At this time, the City Attorney, Mr. Hutchins, will provide an overview and introduce a representative from Maguire Woods.
Robert Lofton from Maguire Woods has returned this evening to continue our conversation about the redistricting and how the city is going to proceed. He has an update to his presentation from the last meeting, and then he's going to make sure he has the correct instructions for how to proceed with drafting the maps, and then answer any questions the City Council may have. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Lofton.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I want to do three things this afternoon. One is to say thank you, two is to issue an apology, and three is to walk through this slide deck. So first, thank you to Mr. Ward for catching an error in my last presentation. The error was solely mine. Ms. Holland, when she began this process, and Mr. Hutchins has wisely continued it, you know, I, we are not talking to city officials. We talked to Mr. Hutchins and Ms. Holland before him about the data. And when I ran the numbers before, I had a precinct in the Suffolk Borough, I had a precinct in the Suffolk Borough that should have been in the Whaleyville Borough. That was solely my mistake, and my apologies to the members of the City Council, and my thanks to Mr. Ward for catching it. I don't like making errors, and I am sorry for that. So what I want to do today, I want to give you corrected numbers, and then I know Mr. Hutchings, from my last time here, has sent some questions that I need some answers to, so that I can give you the proposed maps that you would like. So, from our last meeting, population number, the total population number is still the same, ninety-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-four. The 2010 population was eighty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-five. Since our last meeting, I've confirmed with Legislative Services, they've run the numbers from Western, and there are a hundred and seventy inmates at Western that get accounted to the City of Suffolk. So that raises the city's total population to ninety-four thousand, four ninety-four. With seven boroughs, the target is now thirteen, four ninety-nine. And this is an updated overview for each of the seven boroughs, and again, thank you, Mr. Ward, for catching my error. And so what you see now, using, if you recall from my last discussion, the, the goal is to have the difference, the deviation percentage for each of the seven boroughs to be less than five percent. So, right now, based on the current lines and the current population numbers, Sleepy Hole and the Suffolk Boroughs are within that five percent, and the other ones are not. And this is important, just so you have an idea for the, the map drawing that we will do, and how, you know, there will be lines that have to be shifted. And then, this is a breakdown of the racial demographics for each of the seven boroughs, and, you know, these are the four general categories that, that are, that are used. And the white and black categories are individuals who say are check-that-box-only, and then Hispanic is, is those that check that box, and then minority is everyone that is non-all-white, the way the Census Bureau breaks the data down. And so you'll, you'll see there, under the current lines, Nansman, Cypress, Whaleyville, and Suffolk are majority-minority boroughs currently. So that's, that's an updated overview of the numbers. And then I know Mr. Hutchings sent an email that outlined some questions, and I know we touched on these last time I was here. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to go through those questions. I'm happy to get feedback from the members of, from City Council. I'm also happy to answer any other questions the Council might have. So I, you, you tell me which, which way you'd like me to go, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lofton. I have a question that may be asked to City Attorney. Would it be appropriate for you, in his presentation, to inform the public, I think Council already knows, in regards to the directions that we have given you? Would it be appropriate at this time?
Yes, Mayor, it would be.
Okay, if you would go over those, I believe there were kind of two yes-or-no questions, and then the other three were a prioritization. And then, the individual members of Council, if they were not in the majority, then they would be able to comment on it from there.
Yes, sir. So the fir-, the first question was, how many proposed redistricting maps would City Council like?
And you have the answers to those? You want me to give them to you?
Well, I, I think it would be, Mr. Hutchins?
Go ahead and give them.
Okay, so my understanding is that City Council would like three proposed maps?
Correct.
Okay. The second question is, does City Council want the proposed redistricting maps to keep incumbent City Council and School Board members in his or her current borough? And my understanding from Mr. Hutchins is the answer is, to that is yes. And Mr. Hutchins is going to get me, for each of you, your specific residential address, and the same for the School Board members. So when, when you see the proposed maps, there'll be dots for each of you. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Correct.
The third question is, does City Council want the proposed redistricting maps to try to keep neighborhoods intact with a proposed, within a proposed borough, to the extent possible? My understanding from my conversations with Mr. Hutchins is the answer to that is yes. And he has given me, this afternoon, a CD that has the GIS overlays from the City of Suffolk for each of the neighborhoods. So, Mr. Mayor, is it correct that you want me to, to endeavor to keep neighborhoods intact?
That's correct.
Yes, sir. Number four, does City Council want to keep each census block together, to the extent possible? My understanding is, the answer to that is yes. And the final question is, does City Council want to pursue, under twenty-four point-two title, code section one-twenty-nine, what I called in my last presentation, option one, which has a forty-five-day comment period and thirty-day waiting period, or option two, which we submit, we would submit the redistricting plan to the Attorney General for pre, for preclearance? And my understanding is, we want to go with option two, the preclearance route.
That is correct, but also with the knowledge that everyone on Council requested that there would be a public hearing as well, which I know that's required under option one, optional on number two, and everyone absolutely wants to have a public hearing, even though the majority wanted to go for option two.
Yes, sir.
And in regards to, you asked whether those three considerations were indeed a consideration, that we wanted you to have a consideration. You also, was a prioritization of those three?
Yes, sir.
Even though, yes, we want you to try to make it work, in a perfect world, all three of them happened.
Right.
But the top priority was the incumbents, the second consideration was keeping the neighborhoods together, and then the third was the census block in regards to priority. So, if you had to give up one for the other, where it's either the census block or the neighborhood, then the consensus is, we want to keep the neighborhoods together and, and not be concerned with the census block, if it's an either-or scenario.
Yes, sir.
And I believe that's right, and, and I'll turn to Council and ask if you have any comments, Councilman Goldberg.
I don't have any concern, because I would like to know where the mistake was made in the Suffolk Borough that, that you put into, and that I'd like to know where that was, and I would have hoped that I'd have been called about it before now.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your last part.
I would like to have known about it before now. Somebody should have called me and told me about, nobody told me anything.
Well, Mr. Goldberg, I apologize for that.
That's okay.
The mistake was solely mine.
Okay.
When I was looking at the precincts in each borough.
Right.
I put the South Side Borough in, I, I put the South Side Precinct in Suffolk and not in Whaleyville.
And that would have been Whaleyville.
So.
Okay, not a problem, that's cool.
Yes, sir.
That's cool.
Councilman Williams?
Yes, sir. On question number three, where it's to keep the neighborhoods intact, I guess my question is, or I would like for you to explain, to the extent possible, and will you firmly be using the city subdivision standards, or exactly what are you using?
Mr. Hutchins has given me a CD, I have not looked at it yet, of the GIS data from the City Assessors Office. And so that's, that's the data that I will be using, to look at the neighborhoods, and to ensure that the new district, the new borough lines do not die, bisect or cut apart any neighborhoods, unless absolutely necessary. And if that happens, I will tell you, to the extent, you know, that's evident from the GIS data.
Okay. So, I know you apologized, but it's safe to say that the, of course, the subdivision standard was not used the last time. That's how those numbers got thrown off in the Whaley and Suffolk Borough, because you didn't have anything in front of you to, to really put things in its proper borough, correct?
Yes, sir. Well, and, and I looked, I looked at the precincts as we were, as I was looking at the 2010 maps, to make sure I had the population count. And so I, I had the precinct lines wrong.
I know we agreed to prioritize the keeping the neighborhoods intact and to keep the census block intact, however, with the neighborhood being number one, if we had to.
Right.
Break one of the two up. Again, that will be based upon the city subdivision map. How, how does that play? How does that with the census block versus the neighborhood? Tim, explain that to me.
So what I will do is, I will go back to my office, and I will take the CD that Mr. Hutchins gave to me. I will load it up. I will look at the city's GIS maps, and I'll have to overlay, and they're, they're two different programs, and so you, you have to, you, you have to look at, at the census blocks. And what I do is, like, if you, I'll, since you're sitting there, I'll, I'll have two screens, and I'll have the census blocks up on one screen, and I'm going to have this data that Mr. Hutchins just gave me on another screen, and to see where the lines are. And, but the, the instructions I've just gotten were, the default, well, in terms of priority, we're going to work to keep the neighborhoods intact.
Right.
So.
And the census also, if possible?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, let me ask you one more question.
Certainly. And I, I will take as, as many questions as you like.
Yes, sir. When drawing the lines, and I don't think we had a conversation as a council, but with drawing the lines, what are you going to use for the, the boundaries? Are we talking railroad tracks? Are we talking, what are we talking, main through fails? What do, what do we, what are we using? What will you be using?
If you, if you recall from my last presentation, by law, I, there, there are certain boundary points that I have to use. Railroad tracks are unacceptable boundary. Federal highways, state primary or secondary roads, recognized bodies of water, and there are, like, there are bodies of water that pop up on the census data map. There are certain, you know, like, I mean, I, I grew up in Norfolk, and we had a creek in our neighborhood, and I'm sure it was not on any census data map, because, you know, it, it only existed if there was a really good rain. And so, like, those kinds of creeks, like, in your, in, in neighborhoods, those can't be boundary lines.
Okay.
But if there is, you know, a part of a river, that's, that, you know, is a river, that could be part of a boundary line. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes.
Okay. So we, we will use, we will use all of the acceptable boundary line points. And when I, when I bring the maps in, I can show you, you know, what are acceptable boundary lines. And then you may say, oh, I, like, I know there's this road over here, and that may not, that may not be a state primary or secondary road that shows up on the census data map, so we can't use that as a boundary line.
Okay. Okay. Well, how does the dismal swamp area, how does that play into this?
Most of the dismal swamp is, and it's, like, it's recognized, but there are going to be portions on the out, on the outliers of it. You know, in terms of where, where the census map says the dismal swamp ends, and where it actually ends are not the same.
Okay.
So, and, and that, you know, that's just, that, that's a great example. That's better than my, my trip in Norfolk, where, you know, there are going to be portions of the dismal swamp that aren't, aren't going to be a recognized boundary line, even though everybody knows that that's where the swamp is. The census data, just their maps don't coincide all the time with geographic realities.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Just a follow-up on some of the questions I've already asked. I know that we've said this before about with the number of growth in one borough, and changing the numbers to be spread out among the seven boroughs. We're going to have to really look at closely at the census blocks plus bodies of water, main highways, but I think you probably will have to look at some streets. I would use my street for prime example, Nasmun Parkway. Okay, one side of Nasmun Parkway might have to be in one borough, the other side of Nasmun Parkway might have to be in another, to get the numbers to come to what you need to divide it up seven ways. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So that, I think that's, that's the thing that I, I have a concern with, is that, I know we are saying, we want to try to keep neighborhoods together. Everybody agrees to that.
Right.
But with the numbers being so different, I have this in the back of my mind, that it's going to be hard to stay within the census block and within a body of water or railroad crossing or interstate highway to make it work. I think you're going to have to move some of those lines around in order to get these numbers to coincide with each borough in the seven boroughs. You follow what I'm saying?
Yes, sir, I do. And I, and I agree with you, Mr. Bennett. We, we will have to move some of the lines, and, you know, there's an aspect of that where, I mean, there are times where it's tricky.
Right.
To, to use a, a great legal term of art.
Yeah.
Where to, you know, to ensure that we, we follow the law.
Right.
And, and we follow to the letter the requirements that we, you know, we have to use certain boundary lines. And so for your example, and I, I don't know your street, that parkway is, is half of, like, is your side of the parkway in one neighborhood, and the other side in another neighborhood?
There's another neighborhood on the other side.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that, that could be an example that potentially could be acceptable, because we would be keeping neighborhoods intact.
Right.
Am I, am I following you correctly, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And the other thing I was going to say, I would say, like, in the old maps, Pewsville had three, it was split three ways, Sleepy Hole, Nasmun, and Cypress. So I'm just saying that it has been done. But that wasn't the, what, the best solution, but that's what had to be done.
Right.
Back then, to get the numbers to come out the way that it should. So I'm just, I'm just putting all this out there, you know, up front. So I don't think people should look at, hey, we're picking and choosing it so much. It's what you have to do in order to make the numbers work.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, by, I think the Vice Mayor touched on some of this, but it almost looks like that there may, could be, or could not be, with the census block, you may have to carve into that in order to really get where you're going, because the intact part of the neighborhoods may not be able to work without going into the census block, even though we want to keep neighborhoods intact. Is that a fair question, assessment of that? Or what is your thought?
That, that is a fair statement, and, and so, and that's why, and I'm grateful for Mr. Hutchins for giving me this CD, and also from, for the guidance from City Council. Because I, I will tell you, I've looked at the data, and, and I've looked at where the lines currently are, but I have not started, because I might, I'm not going to get ahead of you.
Right.
I haven't started manipulating it and figuring out.
Fair.
Who might go there, and how do we slice off, you know, a hundred folks here. But now that I have guidance, I will start doing that tomorrow.
With that being said, we, we agreed on three maps.
Yes, sir.
So what is the timeline for the three maps to come back to us?
I could probably be ready to come back in two weeks.
In two weeks?
Yes, sir. But I'm going to, I, I have, I have a map drawing. I have an IT guy that works with me, so I want to look at this. So before you hold me to two weeks, I want to look at this, this neighborhood data, and I'll, I'll follow up with Mr. Hutchings and, and let him know, like, okay, yes, it's going to be easy to overlay, and for me to look at, at how to, to try to keep these neighborhoods together. Or if there's a wrinkle, or an issue, or a curveball, I, I'll notify him promptly.
Well, we certainly want you to be as precise as you can when you do these three maps. It's not a matter of pushing you to two weeks, it's a matter of getting it right.
Yes, sir. And, oh, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
So that way, when you come back to us, maybe we have, maybe a minimal amount of conversation about those maps, and we can pretty much digest where we want to go with that, which map we're going to use, or whatever it.
Yes, sir.
Determines to be. So I, I appreciate what you've done, and I'm looking forward to seeing what you, what you bring back. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Ward?
Yes, you positively accepted, but I can't take all the credit. I had somebody else who's in the audience, and he's very helpful, in particular, especially to draw the map, Mr. Edwards, so I appreciate that. And we was kind of confused when we seen all them numbers, but, uh, we, you know, we just didn't understand how it happened. We figured it had happened like that, so. Now, I'm getting confused up here, because one thing about it, I'm going to ask the question, how important is this census block? Because you're saying you can do this and do that. What, what, what is the reason for the census block?
The reason for the census block is to, is to give a, a, think of it as a square of data that's in a square, and those are the building blocks for how the Census Bureau counts up everybody. So when, you know, COVID was a little bit different, because you could do the census online, you know, I think we all recall, somebody from the Census Bureau walking around the neighborhoods, like, with a list, you know, doing everything the old-fashioned way. And so when they did that, they did it by blocks, census blocks, not neighborhood blocks. And so, and that's why I asked the questions that I did, in terms of how the City Council wants to prioritize, you know, what they want to try to keep together. And so now that I have the neighborhoods, I want to look at that, and I want to look at it and overlay it with the census blocks, and see, you know, you know, see if it, if it is going to be possible to ensure that neighborhoods can stay together. And if there's an issue, I'm going to let Mr. Hutchings know immediately. Because I, I understand the priority list that you've given me, and I want to try to honor that, to the extent I can.
You said, last time you was here, you said it was some, some difficult things you seen while you looked at the city map. Can you clear that up, like, what you, what you seen that we haven't talked about or something?
I'm sorry, I don't recall my comment.
Well, you've made a statement like, well, you see, you see some things got to be changed, and, and, and be a situation that we had to do, move here, move there. I mean, what, what, what you seen, have we hit it? I mean, the, it's not clear.
That, that there are, there are shifts in the population from 2010 to 2020. So for us to stay within the five percent, the lines will have to be drawn, to go to Mr. Bennett's question. The lines will, the lines will have to be redrawn to move people around to ensure that we're under those five percent limits.
Okay.
That, that's what I was referring to, Mr. Ward.
Now, I had the opportunity to have a, a village separated. And that's not the best thing, I feel, if you can avoid that, because when you got one side of the community and another side. Now, I can understand you go down the bottom up there, but not when they live right there, and they've been there for a long period of time. That's one of the things I, I'm trying to hope to avoid, because I, that's not a, you know, when they think they got three councilmen's.
Right.
And one councilman ain't got nothing but woods and trees. I mean, it's people got to vote. And you can't vote for that council, because he's, he's not on the card.
Right.
So what I'm saying to you, if you can avoid as much as possible, that's, you know, we got two councilmen's on two, two villages, community, it's all right, but it's, it's just kind of, you know, kind of difficult sometimes with that. I, I mean, I have done it, and it's not the best thing, and I, before I even set it to do that, I'm going to talk to the communities, if they, that's what they really want, to be divided like that, because most of them have been in the same borough.
Right. And which, which neighborhood are you referring to, sir?
I'm talking about Pewsville was divided ten years ago.
Right.
I don't know if you worked on that la, ten years ago or not. Was you here then?
No, sir. We, Mr. Martin and I came in after everything to deal with the Department of Justice.
Right, okay, but it was divided.
Right.
So what, by being divided, Pewsville could not pick, part of Pewsville could not pick their councilperson. They was put in another community, and them votes was, you know, couldn't say nothing. It was, they just voted, but they just voted. It wasn't no power, no one. couldn't say nothing. It was, they just voted, but just voted. It wasn't no power, no pressure on the, the councilperson. And I don't, that's one of the things I feel like, that's one of the things I hope you can avoid that. And, and one of them maps like that, I'm not going to, that's, that's not, that's not way, especially the old village, you know, that's been years and years of voting together, and all of a sudden it gets split. I don't know. I'm going to find out more details of how they feel about that, because the way I feel about it is different. And, and I'll ask you another question.
Yes, sir.
I've got a few, but I don't want to hold on.
And, well, and Mr. Ward, before you ask, just to respond to your point, I, I will look at, at Pewsville, and both how it was, was cut up in 2010, and in terms of the, the GIS data that Mr. Hutchins has given me in terms of neighborhoods, to see what, what may be done.
Okay. Okay. Explain to me what it means to elect a candidate of choice by a minority community.
Do you, you want the?
Yeah, I want you to explain that. What, what does that mean when you, when you, when a, you can elect a candidate in a majority, minority community? In other words, how, explain that part to me, what it means, by the voting part?
Well, at its simplest form, what that means is a, a borough or a district can, can elect, I'll just, a, a black man to be on the city council, versus a white man, or a white woman, or Hispanic man or woman. Although the Hispanic man or woman technically falls within the minority definition, but, you know, as we, I mean, generally in Virginia, the way majority-minority districts have been looked at, they've been looked at in terms of black versus white. So to answer your question, Mr. Ward, it's, are black folks, the, the simplest way to think about it is, are black folks able to elect a black member of city council? So, I mean, looking here at city council, there are three members of city council who are black. So, you know, legally, in terms of stepping back and, and how, like, the Department of Justice would look at it, they would say, well, there are minority groups in the city, in certain boroughs, that are able to elect a minority candidate. Does that answer your question?
It's, it's close.
Okay.
Okay.
Did I, how, how, how did I miss it?
You know, sometimes, even though it looked like in numbers.
Mm-hmm.
It still might not have the power to elect a candidate, even though by being numbers.
Ye- yes, sir. And, and part of that, I, I recognize that, because part of that is, legally, in terms of majority-minority district, minority is not just black folks. So minority is anyone who is non-only white. So, and that's, that's a, that's how the law breaks that down. And so it could be that there is a majority-minority district that is, I'll just throw out a hypothetical, like 60% minority, but of that minority group, maybe less than, well, it may be the minority group is 48% black, and it's 52% Hispanic, or Asian, or some other minority group.
Let me ask you another question, I thought about it.
Yes, sir.
I think that's number five, said, you had one or two choices, and number one, is number two, where we sent it to, to somebody, is that, can we get sued? Any one of them, can we get sued as a city?
Yes, Mr. Ward.
Which one is that?
You, well, you, this is, as I said last time, this is America, you can get sued for anything. So, and, and I don't say that flippantly. I mean, it's a bit of a, I mean, I, I'm a lawyer, and, you know, I, I do almost exclusively defense work. I defend cities, I defend companies. And I recognize that under either option one or option two, both have the possibility of litigation. The nice thing about option two, from my perspective, is it, it gives the Office of the Attorney General the opportunity to review the plan that the city council is going to adopt. And it, in the event that the city gets sued by some group, and any, any citizen in the, in the city of Suffolk can, can sue the city council for, for the lines that are drawn. But if the Office of the Attorney General has given preclearance, that's a strong legal position to be in for me or whoever is defending the city to say, well, your honor, actually, the Office of the Attorney General reviewed these plans, because we don't have federal preclearance anymore, but we have state preclearance, and the Attorney General has precleared it.
Okay. When you, when you return, will you have some option how to unify the Pewsville community in light of the census block?
Yes, sir, I can, I can look at that.
Okay.
And, and so, so that I, I want to make sure I, I answer your question.
Okay.
The question you're asking me is how to put the Pewsville neighborhood in one borough.
Yes.
Is that your question?
Yes, because I'm going to go back, talk to the community, make sure that's what they want, and make sure I'm act, I'm fighting for the same thing, I think, be best for that community. So that's something I'm going to go and ask the community, see how they feel about that.
Yes, sir. And, and I will look at that, and, and I'll be able to tell you whether I think that's possible or not.
Okay. And when you say you're going to let us know, when are you going to let us, I mean, that, that question is, when are you going to let us know? When you come here or before?
Well, I am, I'm going to go back to my office. The first thing I'm going to do in the morning is I'm going to look at this, this CD that Mr. Hutchins has given me, look at the neighborhood data. And then I'm going to start comparing that with both the, the census blocks and the current lines, and to see how things might have to start be, to be moved. And I'm mindful of the direction, Mr. Mayor, that I've received. And, you know, and it, it could be that, you know, I look at everything, and I say, well, really, there are two scenarios. You know, so rather than three maps, here's two maps. Or it could be that, you know, I look at it, and it's like, oh, okay, here's three maps. I, I don't think it'll be a situation where I'm going to call Mr. Hutchins up and say, actually, there's only one option. I, I have not seen that scenario before. So normally, there's always two options, at least two options.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions or comments? Mr. Lofton, thank you very much for your presentation. I think the public's aware of the process, and you've been given direction.
Yes, sir.
As to how to draw your maps, and a lot of the questions that are being asked will be more relevant once you do draw the maps, in regards to boundaries and streets. And we've given you instruction that protecting the neighborhoods, keeping the neighborhoods together.
Right.
Has a priority over census block. So other than protecting the incumbents, that will be the primary, primary consideration.
Yes, sir.
And I too look forward to your presentation next month. Councilman Ward?
Yes, I just, thank you. I just want to know the time, what time period we looking at?
You said, next month.
For, for about next month?
Next month.
Okay.
You were shooting for two weeks, I believe, but it could be the following meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
And then a lot of these issues, you know, we'll have the opportunity, once we, once you present the maps, for us to review them and get a consensus as to what scenario seems to be the best, along with the public input that we'll receive.
Yes, sir.
If there are no other questions, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
And we will see you next month.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that concludes our work session. We do have a motion for a closed meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please present the motion for consideration?
Pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A8 and A7, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring legal advice of such counsel, and the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment, and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city, specifically the appointments as shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations for the community policy and management teams, early childhood development commission, the human services advisory board, the local board of building code appeals, and the wetlands board. And item number two, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3, the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or of the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically regarding the following tax map number 26 asterisk 1, 18 asterisk 16, and 25 asterisk 24B.
Counsel, motion has been presented for consideration. Councilman Fawcett?
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
We have a second from Vice Mayor Bennett. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
That concludes our work session, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM.